I'd like to call to order the March 17, 2015 City of Statesboro City Council meeting. I would ask Councilman Gary Lewis to please lead us in our implication and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for all that you do, what you do for our city, our state, and this nation that we live in. Oh Father, we ask you to watch over those who defend this country abroad. We ask you to watch over those who are sick today in the hospital. Somebody's not gonna get away with it. Oh Lord, we ask you to be a fence around them and protect them every day. Father, we know without you we are nothing. But we do understand that you have all power in your hand, and you will destroy and you will defend. Father, all these blessed, I ask in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, who is the Lord, who is the Father, and who is the Son, and who is the God of this world, who is the justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis, for speaking today. We have on the agenda public comments, and Mr. Allen Mulgrew would like to come forward and make a public comment tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to encourage our city council and also the employees and in the audience to please join us Friday at 4:30 for a ribbon cutting at the West Main property. The Avery Art Center has done what we would expect is a wonderful job. I think you'll be excited and delighted to see what they've done to an old building and how they preserve the architect. But the city has been a big supporter of us as well as this council. So I would really encourage that y'all would come and join us. I think you'll have a great time, and you'll be real proud of what our downtown is doing. Thanks to Tim Chapman and his team. And also if you look favorable on his signs, very interested, that'd be nice. Thank you for all that.
Thank you, Mr. Mulgrew. I would ask council now to take a minute to look over the consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes, and then for someone to please give me a motion to do so.
Do I have a question? We approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll move to Agenda Item 5, which is Public Hearing in Consideration of Motion to Approve Application SE 141103, which is a special exception. For those of you who were here at our last meeting, you'll know that we actually had a public hearing on this very thing. But how it was listed in the agenda wasn't exactly what we were going to be voting on, so we brought it back to the next agenda, so that we can go through the process of voting on it appropriately. So I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll open the public hearing, but ask community just to very briefly discuss the location and what the special exception is for.
Yes, ma'am. This is for property located at 101 Hawthorne Road. This is at the corner of Hawthorne and Fair Road. The original application submitted was to rezone the property from residential to office. When we presented that application to the Planning Commission, they recommended actually that a special exception be granted with conditions. And we brought that forward to you all for the hearing. We had the public hearing, as you stated at the last meeting, on that. Based on the request to go back, ma'am, listed as a special exception. We verified with the applicant's representative that they were agreeable to a special exception being issued and re-advertize the property as such. So the Planning Commission has recommended a special exception with the following conditions: One, to use the property as professional office; Two, to require vegetated buffer along the shared landlines with lots 109, 110, and 107, but to not require a buffer along Hawthorne Road or Fair Road; Three, to limit the parking spaces on the property to a maximum of 10 plus the existing garage; and Four, to hold the property outside of the sign regulations that would normally apply, and to limit the signage to no more than one monument-style sign, no greater than 5x6 in size, brick and material. The signage is limited to Fair Road frontage, or maybe at the corner of Fair and Hawthorne, if approved for line of sight by the city staff, and a wall placard at the 2x2 limitation in size. Staff has no objection to offer to this recommendation from the Planning Commission. And I believe this recommendation is acceptable to the applicant.
Do I have someone to speak for?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. John Dodson from Maxwell Reddick. We would just ask for your support of the special exception in order to raise investments to be able to renovate this residence into an office, and they're fine with the conditions that were placed on it by the planning itself. So we would ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Dodson. Do I have someone to like to speak against?
Not here to really speak against, but just wanted to point out a few concerns. My name's Brian Davis. I'm with Henley Properties. If we do this special exception, if you grant that tonight for 101 Hawthorne, my question is, what happens to the next house on Hawthorne Road? What happens to 1508 and 1510 Fair Road that Henley Properties owns? What happens to the first house on Oakley Drive? How in the future would you ever be able to come back and tell these houses? Because they're on the same road, have the same frontage, that they couldn't be in office or have a special exception. So to me, the only thing I want to point out is if you allow this one, you need to be prepared for eight to 10 other properties to come before you and ask for the exact same thing. As long as you're okay with that, I see that coming before you in the future, because if this office comes in and this sign goes up, then every property that's decided adjacent to it's gonna have the same idea, because technically the office space is gonna be worth more than the residential space. I can understand that. But I just don't think it's gonna stop at 101 Hawthorne Road. I think it's gonna be everything that touches Fair Road from that point on. And I just kinda wanted to point that out from our perspective. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Does it have anybody to speak for this applicant? Anyone else to speak for? Do I have anyone else to speak against? Do I have any questions from council, or Mandy, or of anyone that stood up this morning this evening? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Those in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion to approve application SE 141103?
Can I talk about it for a second before we do that? Just as Henley Properties pointed out, I feel the same way. I feel everything from Arby's all the way to the Lutheran Church. It's nothing but churches and houses. It's residential or it's churches. And I might keep it that way, too. And I feel the same way. If we start now, there'll be a dozen more the same way. And so I'm gonna come out against this. I'm not gonna vote against it by a certain... I'm not gonna... Not gonna make a motion either way. And I feel the same way on the other side of the road. From when you just did with Benson and Parker's property, wanting to keep them all residential or either church. I just feel the same way.
And I think one of the things that Councilman Boyham pointed out last time was, we talked about that it would take all the shrubbery down and expose ten parking places in front of the house, be discrepant with surrounding property, so...
Well, and then that was what I was gonna add to Mandy. With the recent updates to the comprehensive plan, that would put it out of character with that particular section of Fair Road and that particular neighborhood, would it not?
It could do that, yes.
Since, I mean, since it's considered now a... Is it moving resident? What's the designation on it? Something residential?
That's residential. And there's some areas in there that's residential redevelopment, the area that Councilman Reese referred to, but most of that area remains. That side, across the street, obviously, becomes commercial with the hospital and the market district. But on this side of Fair Road where this subject property lies, it's residential in the comprehensive plan.
Councilman Reese, have you got any people that called you in favor of this?
No one, nobody in favor. I did have one message from a lady who was against, for reasons I stated.
I've only received it.
One against?
No, more than that, but only one official communication, but I haven't had people from up there. No one's been particularly supportive. Because of the precedent that we set.
Yes.
Any other comments from council before I ask for a motion? Do I have a motion to approve application SE 141103?
Have we done motion to deny? They can bring this up again, is that correct?
Well, I'm gonna ask for motion to deny if I don't get a motion to approve.
Well, I was just gonna go ahead and jump in with the motion to deny.
Well, I mean, let's just...
All right, well, I'll wait for your lead.
Thank you. Okay. I apparently don't have a motion to approve. Do I have a motion to deny application SE 141103?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is denied. Application is denied. All right. Number six on our agenda. The applicant is asked to have it removed from the agenda of this meeting, so we will move to item seven. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing regarding application RZ 150201?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is open. I will ask Mandy to introduce this item, please.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a rezone application that we received for property located at 9 Brady Johnson Road. Property is 4.41 acres in size and is currently zoned R4 High Dynasty Residential. The application is to zone the property to commercial resale. Interestingly enough, the property was zoned commercial resale prior to June of 2010. At that time, the property was being submitted for consideration for low-income housing tax credit project through the Department of Community Affairs. And this council entertained a support of that particular project, which required the rezone from commercial resale to R4. That was approved in June of 2010, and that was one of three properties in the City of Statesboro that was submitted for that DCA application at that time. Many of you know the Grace Crossing Project, and it was the actual winner in our city through the DCA competitive process for that particular tax credit program. This application is asking for the return of the CR zoning to the particular property. And we did analyze this through our typical staff processes, including a Right Start meeting with the applicant's representatives, and through our comprehensive plan. This property is located in the Activity Center or the Regional Center that welcomes retail and office uses. I believe the applicant intends to develop the property as a medical office complex, which is an appropriate land use in our 2014 comprehensive plan update. It's currently served by City Services, does not contain wetlands or anything, double take it out of the normal permitting processes that we were able to find. Under our analysis of the zoning ordinance, eight standards in Section 2007, we did find that the property could develop commercially in regards to the restrictions and requirements of the zoning ordinance. And we presented that to Planning Commission. They recommended at about 5 to 0 that the property be zoned to return to its commercial retail zoning.
Was there any stipulations on that? Did you say if there were?
No, ma'am. There were no stipulations or conditions.
Do I have someone here to speak in favor of this application? You do not get 45 minutes.
Mayor, get 4 to 5 minutes.
I'm sorry, Steve. I don't have anything.
I'm glad to be the brunt of some humor to see. I am Steve Rushing, as you may recall. I am appearing once again for the applicant, which in this case is Shin Real Estate Holdings LLC. Its principals are Dr. Stanley Shin and his lovely wife Alexis. They are both out of town tonight, unfortunately. They were both here at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, but we do have with us their Realtor, Todd Manatkin, their engineer, Joey Maxwell, who is, I think, the describer of this proposed project that's up on the board now. Also present, representing the landowner, which is the estate of Jane Harless Ward, is one of her daughters, Julia Ward Youngblood, and her husband, they're on the back row. And also with them is their Realtor, Ms. Brenda Quinn, and of course, her husband. She's with Century 21. Of course, we have a contract, Shin Real Estate Holdings, with that estate to acquire the property. And it is for the purpose of developing, what you see on the screen, Dr. Shin's new office. He wants to build his new office there and has a contract to do so. That is, of course, contingent on it being zoned back to its original commercial retail. And quite frankly, Mandy stole most of my thunder. I basically was gonna make all those statements that she did, and I will not reiterate that since I'm limited to 45 minutes this evening. But indeed, if the last one I was here on was perhaps the toughest of my career, perhaps I'm hoping that this one might be the easiest of my career. Everything around it is zoned commercial retail, and most of it is being used that way. Of course, the market district borders it on two sides. The other side, there is a fire station, substation owned by the city. There's also a self-storage facility right beside that. Both of those front on, of course, Fair Road. And directly in front of the property is a mobile home park, but all of that is zoned commercial retail. Also directly across it is the rear portion of the Cotton Ridge Medical Facility, and this will be something very similar to that if allowed to develop that property. The actual subject property itself is indeed currently, or has been used as a single-family dwelling of Ms. Ward until her passing. And at that time, they did seek to do something else with the property. I believe they indeed had a contract back then with indeed that apartment housing project that did not go through, but they did have to do the rezone to be eligible for that. And now we're just trying to reverse that, remove this spot of R4 out of the commercial retail district and return it back to commercial retail. The nearest R4, I think, is across Fair Road. So it's some distance away from this property. Again, I'm not gonna go through the standards. I think Mandy did a good job of that. It is certainly well-suited for this use and for the return to commercial retail. It is clearly supposed to be that at the time it was originally zoned that, and I don't think anything has changed there, other than there have been more commercial development around it. And as to the comprehensive plan, I think it falls right in line with the Activity Center designation for this area, and clearly this would qualify for that. So I think those standards indeed do point towards the returning of the zone back to the CR zone. I believe the Planning Commission did recommend that unanimously, and we ask that you would indeed adopt their recommendation in this case and return this property back to its original zone back in 2010, which was commercial retail. And these gentlemen are here to answer any questions that you may have in this regard. Thank you, gentlemen.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rushing, Mr. Maxwell, Mr. Manat, head out? Okay. Do I have anybody to speak against this rezone application? For a minute, I thought Todd was getting up. I was like, I don't know. All right. Do I have any questions from council? Is council seeking additional information before I ask for a motion? Okay. In that case, before I do that, hang on. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing to approve application RZ 1502-01?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Do I have any discussion by council, remarks by council, before I ask for a motion to approve? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve application RZ 1502-01?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 8 is a public hearing in consideration of the motion to approve application V 1502-02. This one could be a little dicey. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing to approve application V 1502-02?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I voted.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is open. Mandy, can you please introduce this item?
Yes, ma'am. This is a various application filed, various, multiple parts of our sign ordinance for sign District 3. It's filed, obviously, against the Avery Art Center for their new theater location at 41 West Main Street, which Mr. Mulgrew referred to earlier in his comments, which was, I believe, of the SDA renovated property. The sign ordinance, as we've talked about many times before, contemplates certain types of developments in the various districts. It does not contemplate other types of developments, and it's not flexible in its nature and its application. Sign District 4 is for our downtown urban core area, and most of the ordinance, really all of the ordinance, thinks only about our traditional business developments. It really does not have an allowance for a cultural facility of this type that the Art Center is doing on West Main Street. Their desires, I understand, and Mr. Chapman's here, you can correct me if I'm misstating anything, just really have some signage on this location that is very much complementary to the signage for the theater, the McKelley Theater on East Main Street, in complement of the West Main. So what's on your screen now is what would appear, I believe, on the elevation of the building that faces North College Street, which you see is a marquee-type sign with the lights and the changeable copies and the bulbs and the neon, which is, let's just say, outside of the contemplation of Article 15 of the zoning law. This photograph will face, that's the elevation that faces West Main Street, which has additional wall signage along with four banners, again, in complement of East Main Street beside for the McKelley Theater and Art Center there. We did analyze this. Again, Article 15, which is the zoning, part of the zoning ordinance that regulates sign, does not necessarily allow for variances. There is an explicit statement that says variances shall not issue from the sign provisions. Elegance embedded within our zoning ordinance, which does provide for variances. We typically bring new sign variances out of the concern for due process, making sure that everyone has the ability to come to their city council for a revision. We put this before our Planning Commission, at the last Planning Commission meeting, and they made a finding of fact that the Art Center is an important community asset. It is acquired by a governmental unit and has the support of the city. And based on those findings of fact, and the Art Center's contributions to our city, recommended approval of variances from Article 15 to allow this signage. And I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, in that case, do we have someone here to speak for the variance?
I can't, I just can't, small fiscal mention, that this is kind of in keeping with what the downtown master plan is trying to do. The idea is to create another community-based venue that would draw the public into a more congregational-type space. This is very similar to what the Dory Museum of Art has done in Athens, Georgia. So we took that, the replica of what their building looks like in front, and then on the side, this is the entrance into a theater, and it's very standard for theaters to have a reader board, so that they can advertise the product that they have to offer to the community. Any questions?
Do I have anybody to speak against? Does council have any questions regarding this project, or excuse me, this application?
Is that gonna be like in front of the George Theater, in McKelley Theater, white background, put black letters on it? Is it gonna have, it's got a little dock around it, maybe blinking and...
The bulbs, yes, sir. And the bulbs are not contemplated in that, most of the illumination is eliminated, prohibited in our ordinance. The neon around the stars is prohibited in the ordinance. The reader board, which is, as you said, very typical, but that's larger than our ordinance allows, so that's why it requires approval by you all.
Does allowing the neon open anything up? Further neon requests?
In my opinion, Councilman, any decision, you may open something else up.
Well, the thing about, the thing about this particular sign, my understanding is it's on the Schuylkill side.
Yes.
But it's on Main Street, so it's...
It faces the Gravestones, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's...
They would be terribly upset by any of that. Might be so brave to wake the dead.
My, my, my. Do we have any other comments or any other observations by council? Okay. In that case, can I have a motion to close the public hearing on application V 1502-02?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Do I have any comments or further discussion from council regarding this application? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve application V 1502-02?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Agenda Item 9. In consideration of motion to approve, City Manager, we're entering negotiations with Tower Technologies. Mr. Frank, can you please come forward?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I just wanna say that this is similar to the presentation that the Public Secretary Director made last week, preparation of replacement of a major operation software at PD. This will be the management and finance software that we're replacing here at City Hall and in the city. It would be our utility building, billing, finance, planning, building permitting. It's pretty all-inclusive, but I think we're down one thing here, just the fact that it's gonna be so much more efficient, and it's gonna give us rapid access to financial reports. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna save us on a lot of ways from efficiency to dollars and a lot of things. It's gonna be a big purchase. It's gonna be a big undertaking, but it's gonna be well worth it. I wanted Darren to maybe go through the process, because it is such a big purchase for us. Important.
It is replacing a antiquated AS400 system. We've had a lot of trouble getting support technologically. Of course, we advertise this, our request was proposed in process, as usual. It was a two-stage evaluation, and we had four responses. Seven member committees pared it down to two, and we invited those two to do presentations. After that point, we again ranked them. Now, the first round, we didn't include costs. We left that envelope unopened, because we wanted to look at just the performance standards and pick the best quality. The second round, we included all those evaluations and the costs, and you see the costs listed on those two before we did. We did, they came to presentations, we did go make a site visit to actually News Creek, South Carolina, to do a similar product. I think everybody was satisfied with that. We will, in the negotiation process, City Manager, we'll be looking at cost financing options, both from them and through the lease room, terms of implementation, and models be included. I mean, this report may or may not be included in this. We may look at another software package for them, depends on how it plays out, but we will certainly tend to bring that back to you for final price and final product approval. And this was approximately about a five or six-month-long process. We evaluated it, I think, very thoroughly. But we recommend that you would allow the City Manager to enter into a negotiation. I believe he'll pick a few people as a team, and we meet them and approve, so that's our recommendation.
This is good water bill. Almost always when I see numbers with this big a disparity, $200,000 and something, $262,000 difference? It's more than doubled, the second bid has had. It's doubled every, oh, yeah.
And those were the raw prices. And those were the raw prices submitted and their cost. Now, we'll add Tyler as several clients to that state of Georgia and the United States. I don't know if it was an economy of scale, location, logistics-wise, I don't know. New World is a very good product, but in the end, they were so close in quality that we try not to make cost an overriding element, but for this, that was deciding factor. Now, I expect the negotiated price to be in the range of that cost estimate, depending on what elements and modules we require.
When are you thinking about assuming while we're negotiating, comes up with a price, it's a means, when would this implication of this could go?
It'll get fairly soon. And I think it's going to take about a nine-month process to get all the modules, whether it's finance or utility billing, everybody on board. But nine months from approval would be a logical estimate.
That's right. And the systems will run parallel for a little bit of time until we're ready to swap it over?
They will. They'll bring this system up to run parallel with what we have now, probably a month or two overlap, because we can't just switch and go right and have it fail. It's not an option. But I think we're pretty confident in Tyler Technology. I mean, they've done it before. They've got a vast client base, so it's a safe bet, I think.
How much historical data will be saved? Will they be able to transfer it all or some of it? None of it?
That's up to us. And of course, the more you transfer, the more, you know, it's going to cost. You know, they can, they could put several years or they could start fresh. That'll be a negotiated option as well, and probably bring that to you as an option to approve. And some, from what we've seen, some cities do none, some do one year, some do five. Now, the thing, I remember Brian's, there we go. The old system will stay intact.
The historical, the current plan, unless we get a really absolute great negotiated rate, would probably be two to three years in the utility building. We may have to go back further on that, but the AS 400 will not be going away. So it would be here for historical purposes to look up and do. And we're going to the same top model with the public safety software. The current system, you know, we're just going to keep it up for historical, and we'll put it where it's in a read-only state, and so we'll have that historical information on hand. Now, if the AS 400 dies, you know, then we would have to make a decision doing more to restore it than what we want to do back then. So the historical, we're not going to just unplug it.
I was just curious if the data was going to be transferred.
We will have to transfer some, and I know that Ms. Sue has a, she needs, so there will be some that can do broadly. The conversions, that's what eats up a lot of the money. Implementation.
What I'm hearing you say, maybe two to three years of data converting will be fine? If you need to go further back to that, you just ask for a historical pullout of the system description.
You know, it does cost us a lot more to keep the old legacy, and we just will not have support, so it is what it is.
Yeah, I will add, we will look at several financing options, and I believe this will be paid by each department proportioned by the use of the system.
Great.
What'd you say about that sentence?
Say it again.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Brian or Darren? We good? Okay, then I have a motion to approve the city manager to enter into negotiation with Tower Technologies.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, do we need to, Darren, do we need to put a cap on this, or will you come back with a hard number?
We should come back.
Do we say up to 250, or what do we say?
Well, we will not sign a contract until we agree for you before, so.
Sure.
There, we will bring you a two-to-the penny contract based on what we're getting for the money. So if the next time we present to you, you will approve an exact contract amount.
I mean, you don't intend to be coming back with 400,000 on a contract deal?
No, I expect it to be within 15% plus or minus.
Well, Mandy, if it go back that way on negotiation, then we'll just go negotiate with somebody else.
Well, we do have, since this is RFP, we rank them one, two, and five. And if we hit a wall in negotiation, we do have the right to drop to the next one. But...
Or like jump up 250,000?
Yeah, we'll...
There's a lot of leeway.
Thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item 10, do we have any other business from city council at this time?
The only thing I wanted to mention is that the Chamber of Commerce, the alcohol licensee holders that are also members of the Chamber of Commerce are having like an open talking session next Tuesday. I don't remember what time that was specifically, but it is at the Chamber. And so they'll be looking at the alcohol ordinance and kind of making some recommendations from there. I think they're going to get, Alvin, if I'm not mistaken, did they not get both copies of the, no, you haven't been asked yet? Huh? Oh, okay. All I know is the Chamber's doing some kind of a listening session for the alcohol license holders on Tuesday, so I haven't...
The alcohol?
Aye, thank you.
Is there any operations to do?
That's what I think. Headed by Michael Ware?
Hello, there.
At nine, sure. That'll be up to the Chamber, not affiliated with the city.
So let's ask for, any city representation? Will you be there on Tuesday morning?
I'll be there as a member of the community.
Okay. Take some notes for it, can't you? Any other comments, any other business from council?
I was going to talk about the alcohol ordinance too. Had heard anything for a few weeks on it, months on it, maybe.
I don't know about you, John, but I almost think we might want to see how the state law plays out before we...
Oh wait, has it been voted on yet?
It's been voted on by the House, but I believe not by the Senate. Is that correct?
That is correct, Al.
Yeah, so it, so they've got, what, about nine days to do something? So I think by the next meeting, we'll know what the state has or has not done, and then we can go from there. Because I think if we're going to, no sense writing the ordinance, and then the state comes and tells us we have to change it, so.
Well, I do think this, I think John's got a point. I mean, they're going to have to, the state's going to either vote, the Senate's going to vote or not.
Yeah.
And that'll be within a couple of weeks before we meet next time, actually. So I think, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think what I'm hearing you say is, the next time that we get together, we need to decide on, do we want to, or what is the path we need to forward at this point? Is that what I'm hearing you say, John?
I actually make a suggestion of, I know there's only, I don't know, maybe a dozen sticky points on alcohol that city council hasn't voted on. Probably, that may be more than that, but I mean, the big, uh, big, six.
Al, do not press that. I'm just asking.
Well, that can be. I don't know, that to get it approved as quick as possible, I don't know, I'd like to sit down with some council. I'm sorry, one at a time, two at a time, no more than two.
But if you sit down with two, that's a quarter clock.
That's right.
You know, very gracious.
Anyway, well, no decisions until, until after, until the next...
Why don't you, why don't you?
They will vote it on, I think, the state.
And, you know, why don't you think about a way to approach this? And maybe we can talk about, come up with a way to approach it, because, I mean, clearly what we've done up to this point has not been successful.
Or it's been slow, yeah.
Yeah, we've not made any move whatsoever. We really don't have anything that anybody's agreed on. So, and this has been going on since last July. So I think if you're willing to take that war, and come up with a way to do it, that might be a good thing.
I'll do my best.
Well, I think we address it in two weeks. By then, we'll have some information from the Chamber. By then, we'll have, we know what the state's going to do, so I certainly think we can set an agenda or plan next week.
Set an agenda, we'll, you know, talk about it in nine months.
You guys are all right with it?
I don't have a problem with that. Phil, I'd appreciate that if you would do that. Any other, anything besides alcohol, other business? All right, I'll go to city manager's comments.
Mine's brief, it's just on behalf of the city clerk, notice of alcohol applications. You've got two. Longhorns is applying for a change in alcohol license holder, fit in the background investigation. Cali's Food Mart is applying for a change in alcohol license holder as well, fit in their background investigation.
Did we get an answer to the question that Phil posed, Councilman Boyton posed last time, which was if you get a new change in the alcohol license holder, does that restart the clock as it regards how many infractions you have when you look at that? Remember?
Our current ordinance does not address that issue.
Okay. So we really don't know if a change in alcohol license holder would then start a new clock system.
The proposed ordinance, which is lengthy and voluminous, probably requires a time to spend, but it does contemplate that, requiring 100% change of ownership. You see that in many ordinances. You see that in many alcohol ordinances to avoid the situation where you simply have a couple of violations, and so it sort of cleanses your record, you sort of change the license holder. The way around that is to verify who has an interest in the business at the beginning to make it clear. Our current application has addressed that, too. There's real importance in the alcohol, in the regulation of alcohol, to determine who has a, who are partners in the business, whether legal, equitable, or any way. So, I mean, that's why you have all the financial disclosure requirements at the state level, which we've adopted in our current alcohol license application. So if there are infractions, and someone tries to come in and do a shell game and put someone else on the license, they'll have to do 100% change of ownership, like a real sale. Everybody who owns it sells it. So, because the main thrust of the front end of alcohol regulation is to verify who are the real interest holders in the business and disclosing that upfront. So, and so there's a way, you know, there's a way to keep that shell game being played, and most ordinances have that, the proposed ordinance has it.
So, I go back to my original question. As the ordinance sits today, will the change in license holder restart or cleanse the record as you said?
I would say the burden would be on them to show that there's 100% change of ownership in the business. And if there's a real arms-length transaction where all the partners in the business have vested themselves of interest and legitimately sold the business to someone else, as opposed to just putting another straw man on the license, that would cleanse the record. But if there's not really a change in their license, if there's really not a change in ownership in the business, I would say none of they still own.
So I think Cali Food Mart's already, they've been before us, Alvin, they? Don't think so? Okay.
So the way you address that was, say, this new licensee gets a violation during the hearing, during the alcohol license violation hearing, the person who stares cross-examined as to who still owns the property, who has an ownership in the property, or who has an ownership in the business, and was there 100% change of ownership? So that would be something you would explore by cross-examining the person under oath during the hearing. And so then you could make the determination to say, we as, we as a fact-finding body find that you're the same licensee, you've just changed the name, you've just changed the sign on your business, you haven't really had a change of ownership, so we're going to find this to be a third violation. And if they wanted to challenge that finding, they could. They could appeal it, but, I mean, this is the kind of things you address at hearings and putting people under oath and having them testify in front of you as to what's going on in their business. So that's just part of the fact-finding that's done during any sort of administrative hearing.
Let me ask you something. Would a violation follow the person or a violation follow the business, I mean, the property?
A violation follows the licensee.
Okay, you have anything else, Paul? All right, we'll move to agenda item 12, public comments. Do we have any more, Ms. Sue? Agenda item 13, do I have consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss real estate?
Sub move.
Exactly. No discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?